...order at 7:15. Today is April 14th. And I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Colleen Stanley. And I'm the committee chair for this education budget meeting. I have with me tonight committee members, Robert Arcanti to my right, Nancy D'Amici right here, Robert Riley on the end, Dr. Disconti right here. I also would like to introduce Mayor Mark Ratten. Thank him for coming. I believe David St. Clair will be here shortly. We have with us tonight Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Sal Pascarella. Director of Finance of Schools is not here this evening. I believe he's on a scheduled family vacation. And we're going to try and reach in as we need to.
The challenge is a little shaky, Madam Chair.
We're going to try. We're going to try. We also have here tonight with us the Board of Education members. We have with us Irving Fox over here. We also have with us Robert Caversack, Richard Giannelli. And anybody other, any other people from the Board of Ed? We have Execatio members here tonight, Ben Giannese, Paul Rotello, Bill Curran, Shay Nagashat, Mary Tycho. All in attendance tonight. And I thank the public for coming on. Tonight's meeting, we're going to discuss the Board of Education proposed request. We have a lot to cover tonight. So I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. But I do want to stress that being that we have so much to cover, and it is starting late, it's 7:20 tonight. We do have a public hearing scheduled for April 20th at 7 o'clock in the Chamber's Council Chambers. And if anybody doesn't have a minute to talk tonight, that they can do so then. We're going to try and accommodate you, but I'd like to just try and get everything accomplished that we have to first. So, I think we should start. Would the mayor like to start us off?
I guess I can get us going, and we'll go from there. You know, Madam Chair, what I thought I might do is talk a little bit about the proposed budget. And I, you know, not, and obviously, we have folks from the School Board that can certainly discuss specific items within their own budget. But in order to do that, I want to talk a little bit about what some of the economic challenges that Danbury is facing. Because the discussion that has remained in the sense of what our taxpayers are able to afford, given the current economic crisis. You know, I think, I think one of the, one of the good things over the years is that we've been really good at being able to fund increases every year in the school budget above and beyond what we did previous year. And this year is really no different. This is not a budget cut. It's a budget increase of a million dollars for the city. But you have to put that in some kind of context. And exactly how that we did, how we did that, and what we think the next few years might actually tell us. So some of this you may have heard already, but I think it's worthy to kind of just rehash it real quick. And I'll try to be as brief and to the point as I can. Danbury has weathered the financial storm pretty well for the last two years. This is really growing into our third year. And you can expect similar challenges in years four and five, or until the country and the state pulls out of it. But what we've seen recently, for example, is foreclosures which remain at an all-time high. I think our '010 foreclosures were 159 in the city of Danbury. And I want to put that in context to you. In 2001, there were like two. List pens, which are the pre-foreclosure, they're the paperwork that's filed with the Town Clerk's Office. This year are in the hundreds, meaning that this house is in trouble and could potentially be foreclosed on. And of those list pens, probably 500 to 600 that are in file, we see about 40 to 45 percent ultimately result in a foreclosure. So, you know, we are under significant financial pressure, not just the city, but our residents are as well. And making policy decisions. You have to make a decision about what's best. Does somebody has a home or doesn't have a home? Or do we have certain programs on both sides of the ledger, the city side and the School Board side, that frankly, we could afford, we would want to afford if the economy were was, we thought it would be. But if we, if we try to fund it now, we have the danger of pushing somebody out of their home. It's a horrible decision to have to make. Nobody should have to be put in that position. Unfortunately, those are the cards that we've been dealt here in Danbury, and frankly, across the state of Connecticut. We're not alone in that discussion. Internally, let me just tell you a little bit of what's happening with the city. Each year, our pension obligation fund, or obligation or pension fund has increased rather dramatically. As I mentioned to you in my budget presentation, this year, the city's required to put about $7 million in our pension funds. Is that germane to the Board of Ed? It is. Because in the general employee pension fund, the paraprofessionals participate in that. They don't have a state, like the state teachers retirement. They have our retirement. We have to put additional $2.5 million this year. Next year, we have to put an additional $2 million. The year beyond that, we're going to have to put another $2 million. The year beyond that, we're going to have to put another $2 million. And so that number will continue to escalate and peak at about $13 to $14 million a year, above the $7 million we're putting right now. So clearly, the pressure on our pension fund has grown, and that's due to the collapse of the stock market. While our management of the fund has outperformed all the major indexes, it's still, market still went from 14,000 down to 6,800. So in order to recoup that money, it's going to take a long time to crawl back, answer, crawl back in the interest of that. That's what's requiring us to put in a significant amount. Of the $2.5 million of the city, additional dollars that the city has to put in this year, a million, over a million is for the paraprofessionals. That's money that we had last year to fund schools and other things that we don't have this year because we have to pay for the pension. So it's been, it puts a lot of pressure on us. Of course, we have healthcare obligations on both sides of the ledger, Board of Ed and on the city side. I've seen, I, Sal, and I think you guys have really worked hard at massaging that number down. And that is a never-ending battle to try to get healthcare under control in terms of growth. In Danbury, as I mentioned to you before, in 2005, we spent about $9 million on healthcare benefits for our employees. This year, it's $15.5 million. So when people ask, where did all the money go? There's two spots, pension and healthcare, that are just along the whole line. We're currently in negotiations with our unions. Obviously, those things will be a function of negotiation. We're looking at them very carefully. But these are long-term structural challenges that are going to continue to really take the wind out of our sails if we don't get them under control. I mentioned a little bit about the increase in education spending. And I've just, you know, getting ballpark, not exact dollars, but 2001, when I took office, I think our education budget was about 75 to 80 million. Right now, it's 115 million. So it's a tremendous, it's about a 40 percent increase in education spending over a 10-year period. And of course, it's because of pressures put on us by No Child Left Behind, by the state, new mandates that they lay on us that we have to follow through on. So they can be very expensive. You know, we went through a reevaluation in 2007. What we saw there was a significant shift in the, in the burden of who pays away from commercial taxpayers, that's okay, to our residential taxpayers. So that means that the residents of the city are carrying about 75 percent of the taxes. In the past, it was more of like a 60-40 split. There's more of a burden on the individual homeowner, which feeds into the whole foreclosure issue that we're seeing. Just a couple of other ideas. In order for us to gain, and David jumped in here, in order for us to fund $4.2 million of new money to the Board of Ed, you would need a new construction, ballparking, I'm going to say probably $300 million, $320 million. In our best year, our best year in '05, we had $166 million worth of permits built. And that was during the height of the boom. Doesn't get any better than that. So you can't just say, well, there's a lot of construction, so obviously, we can afford to fund the increase. Next year, we're programming, we're guessing, we're making a pretty educated guess that we'll see about $83 million of new permits in the city, which is half of what we had in '05. So you can really see where the economy has just slammed us in terms of ratable, what we call ratable properties, properties that are eligible to pay taxes, that we can fund our intergovernmental responsibilities. Naturally, the state has not helped us at all. And we haven't had an increase in our ECS formula in probably three or four years. And it's, even when they did increase it, it was significantly behind where it should have been to fund, the commitment the state has to fund 50 percent of our education. Let me give you a figure. City of Danbury gets about $23 million a year through the educational cost sharing formula. We have 80,000 residents. We are the seventh largest city. The eighth largest city in the state is New Britain. They get $77 million of ECS money. That's how screwed up and bizarre that formula is. But the reality is that not only did we not go up in ECS, they cut our priority school district grant by 250,000. So that's a tremendous hit to the school side. And that's a direct grant that goes to the Board of Ed. It doesn't come through the city and then we don't reprogram it. It goes directly to the Board of Ed. Couple other figures, 2005, we have $4.9 million worth of licenses and permits that were paid to the city of Danbury. Next year, we're programming $2.9 million. So we've seen a $2 million drop in licensing permitting fees for the city. Interest income in 2005 was $1.3 million. Today, it's $270,000. We took a $1 million hit on our interest income. All of these things impact the bottom line. And all of these things make it harder for our taxpayers to be able to stay in their homes. And when you look at the big picture, your responsibility as a city council, and my responsibility as mayor, is to try to keep people in their homes first. Part of the hierarchy of needs to have shelter. And it's a real challenge for all of us. We made a major assumption in this budget as well, that the governor's budget would somehow make it through the process where they started. Just two days ago, they announced that, that they have an alternative budget. If the governor doesn't get certain amount of concessions in the contracts, that they would look at municipal aid. And we may very well have to come back and cut not only the school budget, but come back and cut the city budget again, and look for a significant, we're looking at significant layoffs on the city side. And as you know, on the city side of the budget, we have 46 positions that will remain vacant next year, 12 positions that we program to eliminate, and 36 positions that simply won't be there while they're in our TO or not funded. So all of these things are coming together, frankly, to provide a perfect storm, if you will. And we really feel fortunate that we can even recommend a million dollars more spending in terms of our residents. To get another million dollars out of, out of the mill rate, you'd have to raise the mill rate, probably, yeah, about, it amounts to about $240 per household per year. Excuse me, not another million dollars. To get to 4.2, you'd amount to about 250, 260, additional taxes on the house per year, plus your additional that we've already programmed. To get to another million, it'd be probably another, you know, $100 or $120 per year, a little bit less than that. So depending on the size of the house, whether it varies. So it, look, it's a difficult time, and I just wanted to spell a couple of things. One is that Sal, Iliel, David and I talk, I don't know, probably every day almost, at some point during the day. We really are trying to work everything we can. We know that there's some key priorities that are on the chopping block that we're concerned about. We'd like to help in any way that we could to help mitigate those particular programs. And, you know, the Board of Ed is doing everything it can to try to minimize costs and reduce costs. And it's, it's going to be a challenge over the next several years, not just this year, I guess. But that I know has spoken a lot, and I hope David wants to.
Thank you so much.
I think we've pretty much covered. I didn't hear you talk about the tax appeals.
Yeah, we, and the '07 grant list, here's, here's what happens, right? We go out, we do the reassessment, the housing values collapse. Commercial property drops. The people who own a ranch of $250,000, they may come in here and appeal, and maybe they'll get 10 grand or 20 grand knocked off their assessment. But they don't have the money to take the next step, which is to go to court. Only our corporations go to court. And so what happens is we've got dozens upon dozens of these appeals that are from, how many?
We have about 95.
95 appeals of the largest taxpayers in the city of Danbury, right? They have the wires to be able to afford their appeal. And so what that means is, we may say the property's worth 40 million, they say, no, no, it's worth 30 million, and they sue us. And we go to court, and we go see the judge, and the conversation goes something like this. The judge calls us in the chambers, he goes, look, I don't want to have a trial, I've got a golf date, I'm busy. He says, how about city, 35 million, and we're done. It always starts knocking off money from the assessment. It's never like, hey, the city's right, you guys got to pay up. We don't have that conversation. So we've done, we've done everything we can to mitigate that loss. But every time we bring, as you know, we've sat in those executive sessions, we bring an appeal to you, we're losing tax revenue. We've settled about 35 of those appeals. And we have, that's why we have a negative grant list. We don't have any grant list scope. We have no extra growth that we can tax to be able to provide more money or put more money anywhere in our budget. And that's why things are so tight for the next couple of years.
Can you also maybe talk about all the things that the council has approved?
Oh, well, you know, and.
Buildings and.
Sure. And I've said this before, and it's, I think it's worthy to note that, as I mentioned, with the pension obligation, that we're going to fully fund this year because we're not the state, we don't ignore our pension obligations. We're not the federal government, we don't put money in the basement and then just hand it out. We actually meet our obligations. So for the paraprofessionals, that's over a million dollars of money that we had to put in there that we've never had to put in there before. So there's an expense. We've programmed renovation projects at Danbury High School this year, Alternative Center, King Street, King Street Intermediate Primary, Park Avenue, Broadview, and a whole host of other schools that amount to the millions. You know, the one boiler project that I'm going to ask you approve on the 20th is $11.5 million for new boilers for Danbury High, Broadview, and King Street. And we got to do it, you got to keep the heat up. But that gnaws away, nibbles away at the, at the bottom, bottom line of what we're trying to do here, as well as a host of other things that we do that are offline. I mean, it's silly stuff, you know? Sal and I have been looking at the field at Danbury High. And we have to replace, and test course. We have to replace the field at Danbury High School because when we built the field in '02, they said to us, you're going to get about eight years out of this. And we got nine years out of it. And to replace that field, it's about 600K. That's $600,000. Now, that comes out of capital, right? Borrowed money. We still got to pay back the loan though. So that eats away at our, at our debt service, and it eats away at having operational dollars to be able to put into other services. But if we don't do it, kids aren't going to be able to play football on the ball. I mean, we have to close, close the field. It's unsafe to play on. So these are the kinds of things that, you know, we do fund, and we do it because it's the right thing to do. But it's, it's expensive. And it hurts the economy, I guess.
Thank you. Mr. St. Clair, anything you would like to add?
Our, the Board of Ed and the city are constantly looking for ways to work together, to find the common areas. And, you know, whether it's in purchasing, IT, and finance. We do, they purchase together in the fuel area, electricity area, in the gas area. There are plenty of common areas that we haven't even touched upon yet. And we've had several meetings to explore those areas. And we talk about it all the time. The budget kind of put those things on hold, simply because both of our respective groups have been too busy to focus on putting our packages together. But quite frankly, we understand that, you know, that we have to all work together to get through, you know, get through the year and the plan ahead. And we are really, we're not just looking through, looking at the current year or the next budget year. We're doing projects that will help reduce the operational expenses for years ahead. Whether that, that means looking into, you know, voiceover IP or other projects.
Energy efficiency.
Energy efficiency projects. And that's why we, you know, kind of, you know, added in the windows after going through last year. We said, well, why do that and not do this? We backed off and said, let's throw in the windows as well.
And Madam Chair, you know, that program, the boiler replacement, would have really reaped some benefits and some savings if oil was still at about 250 a gallon. But now, it's at $5 a gallon. Now, it's just cost avoidance for the board. I mean, we're just trying to help them keep their, their heads up because, you know, we have these international issues that just, you know, cause an implosion of cost of energy. So we are going with dual fuel, and we'll work on that right now to flip between natural gas and oil, but.
Dual fuel has helped us tremendously. It's helped us on the city side as well. You know, and that's, we, we do have opportunities on the city side, as well as on the school. If a line is running in front of you and we have not hooked up, we're looking at hooking up and converting. And I've had conversations today to figure out what's it going to cost. We're going to work with Yankee Gas. Look, now's the time for us to commit to Yankee Gas for the next couple of years. They're willing to probably incur that cost, some of that cost, to share it with us, as long as we commit for a period of time with them. We're under contract with the, with the state for another year. Matter of fact, the price is going down next year for us, which is great. Meanwhile, heating fuel is going up 42 percent, as of the recent estimate. That is going down for us. So we switch over when the price, this year, we're on, we're on the regular heating fuel because it's cheaper. But next year, we'll just go right to the gas. And so that's the way we control costs on both sides. That's why it's so important for this, these projects, like the energy efficiency project at the school, to get them to more efficient boilers, and to get them to boilers that can switch over on a dime. And to make these hookups for these buildings that they can use dual fuel. Especially when you've got one fuel that's, that's going through the roof, and the other that's a pretty stable cost, in fact, going down a little bit.
And I think the Board of Education's also done their part with solar.
Sure.
If you want to talk about that.
Well, we also have been working on the technology. I think that's been a big piece. And the council has asked us to get together, and we have brought in some consultants. And we're looking at a multitude of technology overlap and redundancies and how we can help each other. It may not be just in personnel, because I think when they look at both places, they're pretty well understaffed. But with technology, we can utilize some of our common systems. We'll save some money. And in the area of, you know, we've been working, well, for two years in terms of alternative energy. And we'll be coming to the council for bond issuance on those projects. You just approved it last month. The cost avoidance on those things will be substantial. It's on three schools for itself. That's a new technology. I think, just to begin, I don't think the board has been aware of financial conditions. I think they've been a partner on it. I think the good effort on their part and the good effort on your part is greatly appreciated. We're just, you know, it's hard to endorse sometimes when you get down to the inability maybe to supply the programs that you think is appropriate for kids. And that's what, that's what's happened to us the last three years. If I can start, then I think the mayor's correct. You know what the numbers are. But for us, for us to reach the allocation recommendation of a million dollars, we have to reduce our budget somewhere around $3,400,000. And let me just give you a quick, a quick update on that. The credits, we've been very lucky with, with our negotiations. The teacher union's here, Kim Thompson is here, helped negotiate this. The unions, we have a one-year contract with no increase for next year.
Can I ask you a question, Senator? What's the increase in healthcare?
4 percent.
So, so, and what's, what's the total number? What's your total number for insurance? Is it 10 million, 5 million?
I thought it was 900,000.
Pardon? You mean in this year's budget?
Yeah. What are you programming for insurance?
This year, the program for insurance is going to be 950,000. We had started somewhere at 2.1 million, when we originally looked at it. So it is, from the original budget that we started, we submitted one with 6 percent. The current one is that we feel real comfortable at 4 percent renewal rate.
That's the increase?
That's the increase.
What's the total number you pay for insurance?
I'm not looking in the book here.
21 million.
21 million.
Now, is it possible to go back and look for some concessions on insurance?
Hey.
So you didn't get any concessions, because you didn't get any concessions in the arbitration. You only got wage, you know, you got a wage freeze with insurance.
Right. All that froze. We just got a wage freeze. And, well, anything's possible, but at this point, we haven't gone.
Hard to ask about that.
That's possible. But I, you know, I mean, that's one thing that might be, that we, we think getting down to 4 percent has been helpful. Everybody's received the same increase next year, which is zero, basically. And that, that has helped us, along with the healthcare. We actually receiving a revenue from the magnet school. It's really come out to be a good business plan for the city of Danbury. The first year was challenging to remember, we couldn't fill the seats. The state, the state did come up and give Danbury $850,000 that year. But since then, with the way it's all going, it's, we've been able to pay for that and supply the right kinds of programs there. So we have a credit in the budget of about 25,000 that we hadn't anticipated. The error funds, we received $3.2 million two years ago. When we received those funds, some communities didn't take it. We felt we should take it because it just saved off the kinds of cuts that we knew we were going to have, and we didn't have that. When we took that money at that time, there was a feeling that it'd be a three-year program. All that happened was, it ended two years, two years, but the new jobs fund took us out two more years. So we did with this year's jobs fund, which was $1.1 million. We, we've been adding about 1 percent of our faculty for growth. Danbury's growing. We're one of a few towns in the whole fair parkland that's growing. Our enrollment's going up. You're going to hear about some growth issues with, with more space utilization. But we, we added eight teachers to the budget after we got our allocation last year, but we got it from the jobs fund. So we took half of that money, or pretty much half, and banked it so we could pay for those new teachers this year without coming out of our operational fund. So that, that's been a tremendous help. That comes to an end next year as well. So that's a credit for us in this year's budget that's helping us get down to the, to the bottom line that the city has asked us to get down to. We are looking at the, to reduce some local matching and head start. We think it's so vital, especially now, one of our recommendations, if it comes to fruition, is going to Universal Half Day. I just remember all the providers actually had a meeting at 6 o'clock. It's very important for us that preschool, to really close the achievement gap, that we all know that we're under the gun with the state with that. And, you know, early childhood education is so important. But still, at that, we've, we've reduced the budget about 50,000. Two years ago, we also reduced it at 50,000. Our staff development account, we're going to reduce it down to, other than those folks that are on grants, just won't go. And that has saved us about 100,000. We're going to keep 34,000 in that fund. The other biggest thing are textbooks. You know, we've had a lot of issues issue with textbooks, but we're going to try to get class sets, put them in classrooms. We've been working with the secondary teachers, it's basically a high school issue. We rewrote 17 curriculums last year, unlike when we went to college high school. The textbook is not the curriculum, it should be a resource to it. So in some courses, in science and stuff, it's great for the kids to take at home, and they can utilize it, but we can't afford to do it. You know, when you have a course that has 400 or 500 kids, and the high school is so large, and those books are now like college books, you've got to pay $250,000, they're not $45,000 anymore. So we're just putting class sets in, but we've had to reduce that because the priority for the, for the, for the board has been, keep teachers in classes, and keep our class sizes reasonable. We've also stemmed off our graduation requirements. The state approved the new graduate graduation requirement from last year that would go into operation two years from this year. The Bar Board went through it, and they looked at it, and it felt that we, we should probably implement it sooner. So we did increase our graduation requirements. We worked to begin next year. I recommend to the board that we just pull off on that because a lot of it could add to a fourth year of, two languages, a fourth year to some sciences, and we just don't know how that might be. So it's hard enough to offer the programs that we have now for graduation. And the state's recommendations to put off two years as well, so there's no funds for the state to run those programs. So that reduction, the things I just talked about, the, from the credits, that is, cutting off the three, almost $4 million with the credits that I just talked about, brings us down to $1.8 million more that we have to cut. So when you add in the healthcare that we save, the AIS revenue, the jobs fund, the head start, the staff development and textbooks, we're down to $1.6 million. Administratively, when we've cut administrative, I know you keep hearing that, well, we're Administratively, when we've cut administrators, I know you keep hearing that, what we tried to do is focus on, we call it the center target. The last two years, we've reduced, reduced, reduced. We're down to the point where we're just providing a base, really a basic education in terms of our outlook. So at the elementary, we've left our reading and writing programs. Two years, three years ago, we had, and I know you know this because you were as concerned as I was, when we had forty-nine hundred students, we had specialists working in the reading program and that program. When the state cut out the funds, we had forty-nine hundred students, we had thirty-eight specialists working with teachers. Now we have fifty-one, almost fifty-two hundred students and nineteen specialists. I just can't remove anymore. The programs that work at the elementary school, the teachers need assistance. Last year, we removed all the aides out of kindergarten. Doesn't sound like a big deal. If you go in there with those youngsters with twenty-two kids in the class with the needs they have, it gets really kind of taxing on everyone in order to accommodate and cover the curriculum in two and a half hours. So we've reduced that as well. Administratively, we had fifty-two administrators in oh-seven, we had ninety-eight hundred students. In two thousand and eleven, we have approximately ten thousand four hundred students, we have thirty-four administrators. Everybody's, we're doing what industries do. Everybody's using more hats. People are doing more things. We had that early retirement two years ago that we put in, so we were able to reduce folks and we eliminated some redundancies and then we just expanded responsibilities. So we've done that already. This is a chart, it's interesting. I have a website and people have been recommending to us. If you look at this chart, this little sliver here is discretionary funds. They really aren't discretionary funds anymore. There's not that much money that we can really determine discretionary. So we're really focusing on this big part with your programs. And we knew we were gonna come down to it this year. We're all hoping that the economy turned a little bit, but as you heard, the mayor, it just hasn't gotten to the point where we're able to do anything about it. So what we had to do administratively, we had a reach endeavor program. We put some alternative schools for our media students. Okay?
Yeah.
The endeavor program, the alternative programs, I know you're familiar with ACE. I'm not talking about ACE. That's still intact, that's left alone. This is, these are highly involved students at the middle school. And you know, the laws have changed regarding suspensions and expulsions. So we have these programs that are accommodating, working with these youngsters and they're doing better. The goal is that they don't drop out and they get back into the regular program. What we've done last year, we consolidated them, we put them under one administrator. My recommendation this year is that we remove that administrator, we go back to a, and we have to work with the unions, a head teacher model. If we can do that, we save approximately a hundred thousand dollars there. We have a curriculum, when we reorganized a few years ago, we had a district department coordinator in every subject area. We consolidated the three areas. One of the areas that we consolidated, the fine applied arts, art and music, physical education and business ed, nine through twelve. I'm recommending to the board that we eliminate that position and we go to some stipend positions to supervise those areas so that we can run them. We can do that, that's an eighty thousand dollar savings. I don't think any of these, I would ever recommend if we hit the resources, just so please understand that. But to get through, to keep teachers in classroom as much as we can, we need to do something in every area. We have an interim director of special services. We have to have a people service director by law. We have the ability, of course, we're a priority in school district. We have someone that retired, we can bring that person back, put that person on a part-time basis. And if the board wants to do that, we can save about forty-three thousand dollars. We would go to a point seven there. We have a guidance coordinator. At the high school, we used to have a director of guidance. That was eliminated about three years ago. We now have a coordinator of guidance. We've gone this year after the person left to basically department chairman, nowhere these times. I suggest that we stay with that model and we don't put back guidance coordinator and that'll save us fifty-three thousand. Director of athletics, we're gonna reduce that from two hundred and twenty-five days to two hundred and eleven days. That's about eight thousand. Now, one area that we didn't talk about, but at the end of the meeting last night, we talked about was to look at our program. I personally think they're extremely important for youngsters for a lot of reasons. The athletics and the drama, all of the programs, they're really an integral life of young, I see it as core, but the board has asked me to look at it in turn. We know pay-to-pay doesn't really work in city schools because the collection's an issue. The indigenous youngsters don't get to play, but there may be some savings there. So we're gonna look at possibly some curtailing, some bussings, some competitions. And I talked with the athletic director and principal today, so we'll have some savings there as well that'll help us. The real programs that are cut in for teachers and were resulting in about sixteen and a half teachers being reduced. Last year, the good news, I know, somebody says, well, you know, you reduce these people's job. That's a good thing. Last year, we had thirty-two positions, I think, reduced. And between retirements and shifting around, I think one or two people lost their jobs actually last year. And then those individuals found a new job, so they weren't unemployed. Which helped us, by the way, because you may recall, we had to budget one teacher a salary for every eight folks to cover unemployment. So we didn't have to do that. That helped us with getting to the bottom line issue. So that was, that was a great help.
Can I just interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
You just said you reduced teachers and then, but you didn't really reduce positions?
Well, when we, we didn't fill the positions. What happens through attrition.
So no, they didn't lose their job, you moved them around. How does that save money?
Because we really never, we didn't fill the positions. Here are those positions that we didn't fill, okay? Now, if though, if nothing happened to them, those people would lose their job because of either retirements or other things that may happen, leaves. We were able to place these folks into these positions. If that didn't happen, they would've all lost their job. We didn't pay for those jobs. Those were savings in the budget. That's how we reduced the budget. Much like what you do here in the city.
Well, not really.
No, you don't fill the positions.
You carry vacancies. We actually.
But do we fund those vacancies?
No.
I don't fund my vacancies.
You're leaving the TO, just.
And then, and then, and they're not there. They're own, they're not, they're not there. But the people that were cut out would come back in through either.
The people that you've cut out of those positions are moved somewhere else.
Yes.
They're still not getting a salary.
That's because somebody retired. Let's say you get a retirement, so instead of laying a person out, they can move into the retirement.
The positions are still out of the budget. The savings, the savings of a million dollars are savings of a million dollars.
But they don't.
If they stayed in there, you'd have to add a million dollars back to the budget. The reason we do that is savings.
And if I may, you know, as an example of the effect of that, our class sizes, that some of our lower grades have already increased. So I have children in second and third grade where they may have been at twenty previously, they're now carrying twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four up to twenty-five. So it's, that's some of the effects of not filling some of the people who've retired. If someone at King Street may retire, instead of having three sections, you have two because we didn't fill it. And there is some moving around, but the net effect is you see class sizes on average going up at some of the grand offices in the district.
Do you know how many retirees we have this year or coming up?
I think we're close to six.
We're six and seven. We have, our program asks for people to report intentions to retire by tomorrow in order to trigger certain things. So we, the numbers are still coming in, but we figure it'll be six, seven.
Can, when do negotiations start?
For the teachers?
Yeah.
We go back in, in June. So we'll go through the summer again. This will be for two thousand and twelve, thirteen and beyond. So our contract is.
This contract covers next year.
We came out of arbitration for eleven, twelve, so we're done for two thousand and eleven and twelve. We're set. And we are going into negotiations this summer for the next academic year and beyond.
Well.
Thirteen.
And you're gonna do yearly negotiations? Well, that's a.
That's what we have right now. We'll go back to the table, that's right.
That was an arbitrated question. We went to arbitration over the issue of a one-year contract or multi-year contract and came up with a one-year this year.
One year? Cut both ways.
Yeah, I could go either way, sure.
Well, for us at this point, it was a godsend to receive zero. I mean, it's really helped us tremendously. And we'll see what happens this, this coming year. Class sizes, now that you mentioned it, just so you have this information. Original class sizes two years ago were twenty for kindergarten and up to grade two, twenty-five for grades three through grade five. Class size guidelines now are twenty-two for kindergarten. Like I said, no, the first grade's twenty-five up to second grade, fifth grade, they have to increase over that. And there's some that are twenty-six, twenty-seven, and that starts presenting problems. There are some guidelines that we try to follow. The high school on the other side, in terms of the savings, I'll talk about. Those courses that are, that are unable to run in the past, that are third or fourth in a sequence, we're gonna have to keep for youngsters because they began those courses. But there's a plethora of electors that have no pre-screen courses to it. Those courses, if they don't get to a critical number of sixteen, eighteen, we'll have to be dropped this year. We just can't offer it. So I've asked them, maybe you can offer them an alternate year.
Which is pretty common. You just don't get enough kids signing up and they.
And you have to drop. That's what happens. So that'll happen a little bit more this year. Half-day kindergarten. The way we run our half-day kindergarten, it's a lottery system. We had this year about.
Full day.
Full day kindergarten. They, we have half-day kindergarten in the district. As I said, each, each school in eleven sites have at least one full-day kindergarten program. It's done via lottery. This year, we had eight hundred and sixty-four kindergarten and roughly two hundred and twenty of the kids were able to go to full-day kindergarten this year based on the lottery. We're recommending that we go to Universal Half Day. If we do that, it's a three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar savings. As you recall, that was one of the things that all of us had hoped that we'd have a full day, you know, down the road. Right now, it's unlikely possible. Middle school for our language, we maintain our Spanish language there, oral language for the middle school. If we reduce our French program, so we go to one language only, that helps for a number of reasons, scheduling, a lot of other things. And the seventh grade youngsters that are there, this year, we would offer to them in eighth grade, we wouldn't take it away from them, but we would eliminate. We'd be able to mix some Spanish and French certified teachers, but we think we could save two positions. I wanted Broadview one over at Rogers Park and save about a hundred and forty thousand. The number that you see there, a hundred and forty thousand, just let me give you a, that's basically what paid for a new teacher with seventy thousand with benefits. What's gonna happen this time, it's not gonna be that amount. When you riff, when you let people go, you wind up letting the more, the less senior person go. So the savings is not gonna be as great, it'll cost you a little bit more money. But for, for planning sake, was, we use seventy thousand dollars as illumination and additions. The electors at the high school, we're gonna have to, they're gonna have to eliminate three positions somehow at the high school. It could be in special ed, credit recovery program. Credit recovery programs are interesting programs. It's new the last two years. These are youngsters that had a decent score but failed to get credited in a course. Rather than taking the whole course again, they sign up for credit recovery and they start at a certain point in the course, they can finish it and receive a pass or fail. They don't have to take the course again, they're on a graduation track, plus it saves us in FTEs. It's like going to summer school and taking them. We're gonna have to reduce that a little bit because we just don't have enough staffing level to handle it. Right now, we're offering six sections or seven sections and after school and it's filled up. It's been a popular program, very helpful for our youngsters. So probably have to reduce that to half the time. We have not touched the, we also are looking at guidance councils. One at the high school to eliminate and one at the middle school. So right now, there are three middle school councils at each of the, at Broadview and Rogers Park. They'd have two and a half and two and a half. I don't think it's a good idea, but it's what we have to do. We have not touched the counseling program the last three years that we cut. If we were able to do that, high school eliminate one and the councils eliminate one, the numbers will go up to one to four hundred and one to three hundred at the high school. It'll be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings. That reduction of sixteen and a half FTEs will bring us down to about a million seven of credit. So leaving the balance of about three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to find in order to get down to a zero balance budget. The way we would do that, we would now go over to our support staff and reduce about eight there. We have a number of tutors. Tutors play a different role with the integration of special education. Youngsters are encouraged to be, stay at their homeschools and be pushed in the classrooms and not be left and segregated out or even removed from the campus. But it's increased the number of tutors that we have. But we think we can possibly save on three tutors. Parent professionals, we would reduce by three. And we would again try to look at our secretarial staff to see if we can reduce two. If we were able to do that, the total on support staff would be eight. It would reduce the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the balance of the budget. Positions not filling this year, you all know Dr. DeLuce and Left, we won't be filling that. The curriculum administrator for fine applied arts, I already talked to you about that. That's, that's one administrative position. We would not fill the director of information. We're hoping a team with the city to help us out on that. We need someone who really has the broad perspective about information services. But we just don't feel comfortable being, fulfilling that at this time. Athletic director, we're gonna reduce from two twenty-five to two oh-six. We will not fill the guidance position. We won't fill, we have a technology system analyst that we're just not gonna replace next year. We're gonna hold off for a year. If we have to go out and get a specialist to come in for a short period of time, we'll do that. We will not fill the elementary psychologist position that we have. And we're gonna eliminate, as I said, the parent professionals and the two secretaries. Just, just for your own information, the following people, groups will be getting zero. Secretaries, pairs, superintendent cabinet, teachers, administrators. I'm not sure about the custodians and nurses, I'll be honest.
Right, the nurses, we're going back into negotiations now with them, so their contract is due to expire, so that's, we're at the table. And custodians had a holdover of a slight increase that was negotiated quite a while ago. And then that contract will also come up for negotiation, so.
When is the parent professional up for negotiation?
I believe it's another year from now.
Because depending on how our negotiate, your awareness issue.
Yeah, so just to kind of bubble it all up, you've heard a lot of detail, kind of rapid fire. But, you know, just to bring this to a higher level, you know, the budget books that you have, that the board passed back in February, really were based upon taking the same exact programs we have today and moving them forward. And the board's thinking behind that, you know, we realize the position that the school district is in, where we're between a rock and a hard place. So we've already described the rock, which is the financial constraints that we're living under, the ability of the taxpayers to fund the school district. On the other hand, the hard place, and the mayor referred to this earlier, is the increasing set of requirements that are being placed on the district by the state and the federal government and other agencies. Accreditation agencies for the high school, et cetera. And we're under the gun to rapidly improve student performance and achievement in the schools. You know, is money the only factor in doing that? Absolutely not. But is it, is it a factor to provide the basic materials that we need for the students to work and to thrive in that type of environment? Absolutely. And so that's, you know, we all hear the stories about schools that are placed on need to improve lists, which we have several of them in the district. And that list increases every year and only because the bar is being raised so high. You know, by the year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, it's anticipated that a hundred percent of our students get to proficiency. We can debate the legitimacy of that, of that rule all day long, but that's still the law of the land. So what you'll see across the state and the country are districts with increasing numbers of schools on these lists. And the penalty for being on these lists require additional or successive steps of corrective action, which require a lot more intervention from administrators, from staff and teachers and everyone else to raise students' achievement levels to the standards that are being prescribed. And the constraints of the current budget situation, you know, don't help that. Obviously, we're, we're putting in as much as we can, but the other side of the coin of the finances is that the academic requirements aren't going away. And so we need to, you know, this isn't just a problem for Danbury or Connecticut, but across the nation. Many municipalities are facing the same, the same problem. And unfortunately, there's really no one at a state or national level that's really has a unique solution or a solution to the problem. So we have many districts raising their hands, woe is me.
How many, how many years has it been since we've been having the issue of?
It goes back at least three, four.
It's been for what?
Needs, need, need improvement lists, that goes back.
It started the two thousand and three. I mean, that's when the testing started. And what Connecticut did, I think it did it the right way. Instead of waiting, you can hear about debates between some states are succeeding, others are not. Connecticut took the approach that they would incrementally, incrementally increase to proficiency. Some states, instead of doing this, did this and then figured, we'll wait out the government and we won't let it hit us. So what has happened is, is every time more and more schools are put on that list. Most of the large high schools are on that list now because they look at. Most of the large high schools are on that list now because they look at subgroups and growth in subgroups, even though the general population may be doing well. They have excellent rates for letting, good dropout rates or low dropout rates, good attendance rates, but subgroups can put you in those categories. So it's roughly, we have two years left until we get to the magic number. So there's a lot more, a lot more, a lot more schools in that area. I don't want you to think that we haven't done something. We want, we received the project opening door grant, that's for our AP. The high school's been challenged the last few years because it's been in the improvement area. We just got recognized three weeks ago for the good work of our teachers and our students for their scores on the AP exam. Not only have we grown in numbers, but the kids are doing very well. I was at a conference today, and Danbury's gonna get some good news pretty soon in terms of its success in the number of kids that are challenging themselves in AP. And what it does for us, it's really created the culture of moving the curriculum forward. We have some growing pains, no doubt, and we're challenged with not having the resources to provide the capacity to build professionals on it, but we're working on those things to move ahead. The challenge at Dover Court is, even though economically, I mean, we can fix the buildings, you know, we find the money, we need to do that, but we also have to move ahead even though we don't have resources. So we've been trying to get grants to Dick's here, he's been working with Adopt a School, and we have between in-kind and help about a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. We just got a notice today that we may be a finalist for a good grant for the high school in Anelli May. We applied for it and we lost it, but they want us to reapply again, so we're trying some of those things. One thing I neglected to mention, I need to mention, I've been doing adult ed since Bob left, and the state has come in, and they need a full-time director. It's not a position that comes out of operation, it's a funded position through the state, but we have to put in a full-time director again. And we're gonna try to expand that person's work to do some grant writing and other development things so that we can maybe bring some more grants into the district that would help us.
And just so you know, when you look at the book, you know, where this affects the tax, how the city's taxpaying, the city's taxpayers funding schools, this year we were able to offboard some of the superintendent's salary to grant funding because he was covering for the adult ed director position. So the state is telling us we can't do that. So one of the things you'll see is an increase in the superintendent's salary line, but that's just a shift from...
Would that be my raise though? I just wanna make sure I say that. But it'll be out, it's not gonna, I know.
It represents a shift to the taxpayers.
But it's not a salary increase, it's just that the state won't allow me to do it. They want a full-time director.
But just to wrap up what I was saying, you know, so when you look at the board's position, February was, we need the programs that we have in order to raise the students' achievement and to get them where they need to be. Obviously, we can't afford to do that. And the major cost drivers we went through are, you know, the health insurance at the time, I think, was nine percent at the time we approved the budget. It's now down to four, so that's blunting some of the cuts we need to make. But the other two are increasing enrollments, and the biggest, the biggest factor on expenses is the lack of federal funding, where the two-year plug that the federal government put in there to prevent layoffs two years ago has finally run out, and that's not been renewed. And so now the question is, does that get shifted to the local taxpayers, or do we just have to eat it? Which is, again, taxpayers can't afford it, that's what has to happen.
Well, you knew when you came in that it was only for so long.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, we could, some districts took the money and did one-time expenditures, they just went and bought some. We elected to use it for our teachers and keep them in classrooms, but we knew that would happen, yeah.
And the last thing I would mention, you know, the list of suggestions that you heard and recommendations we went over last night, we went over at the board's finance committee meeting about a week ago, the day after the budget presentation, so we've been preparing for the eventuality of what we're willing to come in at. But just keep in mind that these are recommendations, the board had a very spirited discussion about many of the items on the list last night, and will continue to do so till the numbers are final. You know, we won't be finalizing our line item budget till after the council votes. But there's been a lot of discussion about what items should or should not be on the list, but keep in mind, I think whatever gets, if anything were to be taken off of this list, I think something else probably equally as damaging would be placed back on it. Because I think, and I'll credit the administration for doing a fine job, Elio especially, on the health insurance and negotiating that down about seventy-five percent from where it was in terms of an increase. But we, and we're gonna keep trying, but in the event we hit the wall there, there aren't a lot of dollars to take out, and so if we remove one of these recommendations from the list, I think something else probably equally as damaging would be placed back on it. So that's, that's a tough conversation to have, but it sounds as if, you know, we don't have very many councils left to kick out, so it's...
And I know the council's been receiving complaints on transportation, and what's happening is our ridership has increased exponentially, and we have not increased our buses. So what's happening is, it's just taking longer for youngsters to get home, and people getting frustrated, the rides are getting longer, but we just can't see how we're gonna be able to add some buses to the, to our fleet just yet, so. But it's not the only problem, but that's created some real issues for us. I think that's it, unless someone else, Dick's here, or anybody else?
I think Mr. Rowley has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could comment and then a question, if that'd be okay. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you very much to the Board of Ed and Dr. Sal. I certainly appreciate your efforts. That being said, I'd just like to stipulate a couple points. One, that, as the mayor had mentioned just recently, this, this is a very difficult year. Last year was the same, but this year tends to be even worse. The social security payments in the last two-and-a-half years are zero percent increase. Disabled American veterans for the last two-and-a-half years, zero percent increase. For retired teachers, administrators, zero percent increase. It, it's a very difficult situation. You can't get blood out of a stone. It's impossible. That being said, I take issues with the line item zero-zero-four. If you look at the assistant principal line item, it's an increase of twelve-point-nine-five percent. Now, all due respect to Dr. Sal and the board, you would say that, yes, we've cut administrators, but it's a convoluted issue. The reason is that what has transpired, we have taken, we have taken teachers who normally, maybe in some cases are not, do not have a six-year certificate, or they might have, and we give them a stipend as an administrator, and we also turn around and we, we eliminate them from maybe teaching position by two to three classes. So my point is, if you go onto the web, web, and you check out the administrative numbers, we have not, we have not reduced the number of administrators, we've increased. And if you look at that line item zero-zero-four, twelve-point-nine percent increase for administrators is absolutely crazy, absolutely out of whack. And, and I, I say this, that it cannot be. And, and so it's a convoluted issue when we say that we've dropped administrators. If anything, ladies and gentlemen, in all due respect to Dr. Sal and the board, if you're, if you're gonna sit down and you're gonna start cutting, take a hard look at your administrators. That's, that's where a lot of our money is going. Secondly, secondly, paraprofessional special ed increase twenty-eight percent. Overall, the educational special ed increase is thirteen, approximately thirteen percent. Now, I'm a former educator, I have thirty-four years in, by, by any means, I understand the system, and I'm not so old that I forgot what the hell I'm, excuse me, I forgot what I'm talking about. Now, special ed, all due respect to special ed, it's a separate entity within the school system. It's a, it's a must, and we need to have it, there's no doubt about it, because our, our students and our children that are special, all due respect to them and their parents, they need to have it too. But I'm gonna tell you right now, it's a self-motivating situation. The more you identify ADDH, ADD, and all these other issues, the more, the bigger it gets. It's, it's a problem within itself, this special ed budget. It's well over twenty-five, two-point-five million dollars. It's an issue. The last thing I would say is that our poor taxpayers, they can't, they can't handle it. You know, it's, it's, somebody like me, a retired teacher, yeah, sure, I can handle it, but I might be an exception to the rule compared to some poor people that are on a slow, a low fixed social security payment per month, and they're at the, at the realm of, if they get a raise in taxes this year, they don't know what the heck they're gonna do. We just can't afford it. And then the question for Dr. Sal, all due respect again, we, a little while back, we talked about the issue of solar panels, and we talked about the issue of, I think it was coming down to one-point-four million dollars to put solar panels at Park Avenue School. Is this part of the budget this year? If that one-point-four million dollars is part of the budget to put solar panels at Park Avenue, it's a twelve-year process before you receive any savings down the line. It is not something that has to be done this year, in next year, or the following year. We could, if that is true about the one-point-four million dollars that the taxpayers are gonna get hit, that means you could cut one-point-four million dollars right off the budget, if that is true. Do we need solar panels at Park Avenue right now? No, we don't. And then secondly, if I'm not mistaken, at the time that we talked about solar panels there, the gentleman in question that presented wasn't willing to guarantee it. I know one thing, I've been around a long time, ladies and gentlemen, you don't poke holes in buildings, especially the roof, because the roof, when you drill one little hole, it's magnetosporous after a short time, meaning it gets bigger and bigger.
It's magnetosporous.
Okay, so you think about that, and maybe Dr. Sal will answer that question.
Magnetosporous?
Big, big, big.
Regarding the solar panels, I'd have to double-check, but I believe that was part of our system, and it really didn't increase our operating budget to do that, but I'll, Elio's not here, I'll have to double-check. David's here, it's not part of it.
It's over a number of years.
But it's still in the budget this year.
It's not a one-time purchase.
No, and there's no, no holes are being drilled.
And there's no, you know, you're not gonna, it's, those projects are intended to have a minimal in operational, operational impact in the year, so it's spread over twelve years.
And they're free-floating.
And there's no holes in the roof, just it's a free-floating thing, it gets set on the edges.
Or at least that we don't have a year like we had this year, and maybe the roof will stay a roof.
Mayor?
The only thing I just wanted to mention, Chairman, I don't know if we'll solve anything tonight. I think that I can speak for all of the council and say, if, you know, we'd love to give as much money as we can and afford to.
We would love to give you, we'd love to fulfill whatever request that you had because everybody, every single member of that city council is supportive of our teachers, our staff, and most importantly, our children and the families who support them. We get that, we understand that. And I think for whatever coaching that I can give from David and I's perspective is in the council, is that we need to fund things that will change the long-term dynamic of what we're facing. So whether that means, you know, biting the bullet now, spending eleven million dollars on windows and boilers because we know that oil and natural gas are only going up, and we've gotta be more efficient with the energy we deliver, or whether that means that we can buy on IT, or whether that means that we look at the ninety-nine percent of that pie chart, which I know is not popular, and I know it's not the greatest thing in the world to say, and I'm not trying to disrespect anybody, but, you know, our, our health benefits and our pension benefits, our grain, any ability we have to be able to sustain increases for the kids, and at the end of the day, it's supposed to be for the kids. And that doesn't mean that I'm a teacher. I hope in November, now I have to go back to the high school, but I might have to. I'm still in your unit. And I'm not suggesting that we, you know, we stick teachers or paraprofessionals with, with, I'm not suggesting we stick teachers or paraprofessionals with healthcare benefits and they can't get, they can't get care, I'm not suggesting that. But I am saying that this is a new dynamic, it's a, it's a new normal, and the more structural changes that we can make, and we're going through some very painful negotiations now around those issues because it's just not sustainable. The general employees pension I mentioned, the employees put in no money towards that pension, not a dime. That's just not sustainable now in this economy. So these are things that we look at, and while they were great in the sixties and seventies and eighties, and even in the nineties, they're not great now because of, of, of an economic tsunami. And I don't mean that, you know, to be insensitive. So I think we just have to recognize that structural changes are what we need to do. We need to invest money in structural changes when it makes sense, because we're trying to look at the long-term expenditure here, and then we've gotta get through this hump in the short term. To that end, what I can commit to, and the council can commit to Sal, David and I will work with Sal and Elio, this is a work in progress, it's not over. We've heard your priorities, and I know, I think all of you in the room admit that I pretty much know every nook and cranny of the city, and I know where we, what we need to do. And I can't promise anything tonight, we're not gonna change anything, I don't know if you are, it's up to the council, but I can tell you, we're gonna continue to dialogue, and if there's ways that we can combine resources, parks and rec, other kinds of line items, that fund, Sal will work with you on that, and the board, I can guarantee you.
Mr. Arkady?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Sal, we all know you're not gonna get a hundred-and-eighteen million bucks this year. So let's just, let's just say, you were to, you were to receive the mayor's proposal, which would be a hundred, what is it, a hundred-and-fourteen-eight-ninety-five, is it right around?
A million dollars or more.
Yeah, well, I looked here, it was a hundred-and-thirteen-eight-ninety-five, so we've got a hundred-and-fourteen-eight-ninety-five. Help me out here, Dr. Sal, with all your, with all that you said, what are we losing if you get a hundred-and-fourteen million bucks?
What, we're losing?
Yeah, what are you losing?
All day kindergarten.
All day, all day kindergarten.
No doubt, right? Pardon, there's no doubt.
It's on the table now, it's not permanent till...
No, no, right now, it's just a recommendation to the board, they have to finalize it. So all students would have the minimum, which is half-day kindergarten. So the one full-day kindergarten at each school would be eliminated. Foreign language at the middle school would only be one language, be Spanish and not French. The, we would lose, and I missed this, I apologize, two tech ed teachers at the middle school as well, one at each school. We would, the high school would lose about three positions. It depends on, you know, again, where the numbers are low. Could be in special ed, could be in, could be in, some of the electors are credit recovery. You're gonna lose a psychologist, and you're gonna lose two councils. We're gonna lose reach endeavor administrator, what is it? That's an administrator, that's the alternative program.
Can I ask you a question about that? That reach endeavor program, at one point, there are two separate programs.
That's right. One was...
And then we, when then we...
Last year.
You asked one administrator to take over?
Both.
Both. And how's that administrator doing with that project? Has she, has, has it done well? I mean, you're talking about using a head teacher model, can you explain to me what a head teacher model can do? These kids, if we're talking about our kids at risk, and I wanted to know with security, you know, what kind of security measures, you know? You're talking about a head model teacher, and is that teacher, head teacher model, would that person also be taking on more responsibility somewhere else?
The answer is yes, yes, and no, I guess, is the best way to put that. What we would have to do, it would be better if the person was there, but again, I'll go back to saying, I wouldn't be recommending this, and we're able to fund it at a different level. But in terms of the way we're looking at it, one time, the... But in terms of the way we're looking at it, one time, the program had one head teacher some years back, it was, I forget Ken's last name.
Each program had one head teacher?
We didn't have the endeavor, oh, that's what I thought, but the, we did have one person, head teacher, that taught and, and had a stipend, and that person's in charge of stuff there. Remember, it's a small group, but although volatile, you're correct about that. Two, three years, three years ago, we started an endeavor program, we put a full-time counselor in there who kind of ran the program, and we had.
And endeavor, what kind of kids?
Middle school.
Middle school?
Seven, eighth grade students. The reach were high school students and ex- ex- college students. Last year, we combined the both, and we put, put them on one campus. We did some remodeling, they're separate, but they're on campus. We have one administrator there overseeing both. This proposal would remove that person from there, put, go back to the head teacher models that we had. I would also then take one of my pupil service individuals, much like I did at No Ridge, the school that we closed, I'd put someone there as administrator kind of overseeing. I'd have to have someone in that building where they would operate out of. One of the individuals we have that, that's in charge of counselors and psychologists, social workers, all of those services those youngsters need, need, could be housed there rather than at central office, so I, I would do that. We could still have a security problem, no doubt. It's better to have a full-time person there, as we have now, but that's not what I'm recommending.
So you would be putting a full-time person there?
But right now, the person who's there now, the difference is, the person who's there now, that's their home, they stay there, you know, they're there the whole day. The person I would put there, we'd have the head teachers dealing with, you know, operational issues, but they'd be an administrator in charge of that campus ostensibly, but it's not gonna be there twenty-four seven. They could be out at some other schools. That's the difference, that's the difference.
And you feel that's?
I feel I have to do that.
You don't think there's a security issue there?
Well, I think there's, yeah, I think there's a security issue now. By my way, I probably would have a security person down there. We're gonna have to change the program, not just say that. We, we may have to go back, right now, the youngsters, I'm gonna have to talk to the board, they're there a full day, and that's not working as well, we may have to go back to some partial day work with them to, to.